Hi Kay, how are you?
And then I'm learning how to start.
You'll do great, I have lots of questions for you.
I'll report back in the next minute. How the procedure for that hit. If everybody could find a seat and sit down, or find a wall to stand on, I'd like to take a moment and welcome everybody to our first school board meeting of the new school year. My name is Stephanie Spires and I am the school board chair, and I'd like to take a moment and welcome all of you here tonight. We have a lot of students here that are receiving awards and recognitions, and some teachers and staff that are getting some recognitions. And usually at our meetings, you notice we have a staff representative, a teacher representative, a classified representative, and a student representative, but we do not have those in the summer, so since they weren't...our planning meeting was still technically in the summer, we don't have one at our August meeting, but they will be joining us in September. So thank you all for joining us tonight. So at this time, I would like to ask for roll call.
Mr. Raymond Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Merrill Love?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Mr. Will Nash?
Present.
Mr. Stephanie Spires?
Present. And Mr. Daniels?
Stand for a moment of silence and read me the pledge. Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as provided.
So moved, second.
A motion by...Mr. Murphy, were you the so moved?
I was.
No, Mr. Nash was, I couldn't hear his sentence. Mr. Nash moved, Mr. Love seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. At each meeting, we have a student performance, but tonight we have an extra special teacher performance. We like to begin each school board meeting with a performance to highlight our talented students in high-quality arts instruction, but tonight we're trying something a little different. This evening, we welcome David Scholl, Associate Principal at Lafayette High School. He's also the proud father of four daughters, Jordan, Zoe, Delaney, and Emmy, who have and are attending Fayette County Schools. David made his return to the stage this summer at the Lexington Children's Theater production of Annie in the role of Daddy Warbucks, and if you all saw it, he was amazing. He has always loved performing and was excited to return to the stage, and tonight he will sing Proud of Your Boy from the musical Aladdin. Please join me in welcoming David.
Proud of your boy. I'll make you proud of your boy. Believe me bad as I've been ma, you're in for a pleasant surprise. I've wasted time, I've wasted me. So say I'm slow for my age, a late bloomer, okay, I agree. That I've been one rotten kid. Some sun, some pride, and some joy. But I'll get over these lousing up, messing up, screwing up times. You'll see ma, now comes the better part. Someone's gonna make good crosses, stupid heart. Make good and finally make you proud of your boy. Tell me that I've been a lousy and loafer, you won't get a fight here now ma'am. Say I'm a gold brick, a goof off, no good, but that couldn't be all that I am. Water flows under the bridge, let it pass, let it go. There's no good reason that you should believe me, not yet. I know that someday and soon, I'll make you proud of your boy. Though I can't make myself taller, or smarter, or handsome, or wise. I'll do my best, what else can I do? Since I wasn't born perfect like dad or you. Mom, I will try to, try hard to make you proud of your boy.
And if we have any family, or coworkers, or friends who want to stand and be recognized for supporting David and his return to theater this summer. I was at opening night, and there were lots of Fayette County employees there cheering him on. At this time, I would like to invite my colleagues down front to do awards and recognitions. Philip La Martineer, a freshman at Tate's Creek High School, and Hope Myers, an eighth grader at Southern Middle School, placed second in structural engineering at the Technical Technology Student Association's 2019 National Conference. TSA fosters personal growth, leadership, and opportunities in innovation and design. Club members apply and integrate science, technology, engineering, and mathematics concepts through co-curricular activities, competitive events, and related programs. Please join the board in saluting Philip and Hope, and if you all are here, come on up. And we would like to invite the family members of Hope and Philip, if you all could please stand and be recognized for supporting your student in their extracurricular activities. Elementary track championships, track and field championships. The girls' club team from Liberty Elementary took first place, and several boys finished first or second in the 2019 Kentucky Track and Cross Country Coaches Association Elementary Track and Field Championships. Among highlights on the girls' side, Chloe Lewis placed first in the 100 and 200 dash. Isabella Spillman, first place in the 400 dash. Sydney Roberts, first place in the long jump. Reagan Roberts, second in the long jump. Gia Griffin, Mila Gonzalez, Jenna Matcheswala, and Reagan Roberts, first place in the four-by-100 relay. Leila Hud Smith, Chloe Lewis, Isabella Spillman, and Sydney Roberts, first place in the four-by-100 relay. Maddie Barkley, Leila, Isabella, and Sydney, first place by the four-by-400 relay. Edie Ingram, Ty Park, Maddie, and Leila, first place in the four-by-800 relay. And Jillian Downey, Ezraiah Hughes, Corey Mayberry, and Berkeley Tevis, second place in the four-by-100 relay. Highlights on the boys' side from Liberty included Xavier Carter, first place in the shot put. Caleb Balsam, Tripp Hudsmith, Brady Cott, and Xavier Lee, first place in the four-by-100 relay. Jesse Dick, Tripp, Brady, and Xavier Lee, first place in the four-by-400 relay. And Caleb Bush, Dominic Crosby, Hayden Morgan, and Corey Wilkerson, second place in the 100 relay. All these Liberty students are coached by Lindsay Roberts, Leah Park, Kathy Broadnecks, Rick Ingram, Kevin Cott, and Eric Harsham. Please join the board in recognizing them on their achievements, if all of you can come up here. All right, if all the parents and family members and grandparents and friends of these track stars can stand up so we can thank you for getting your kids to their activities. All right, when I start calling your name, if you can start coming up, and if you're a big team, if the whole team can come up, that's great. We've got a lot of awards tonight. So we've got some middle school state championships. Several students picked up first and second place medals at the 2019 Kentucky Track and Cross Country Coaches Association Middle School Track and Field Championships. If you all are exiting, if you could exit quietly so that everybody can be recognized. Several students picked up first and second place medals at the 2019 Kentucky Track and Cross Country Coaches Association Middle School Track and Field Championships. The overall top winners included Ayanna Darrington from LTMS, first place in the 300 hurdles, Jacoby Bickerstaff, Rami Equal, Caleb Nelson, and Delaney Smith Jackson from Beaumont, first place in the four-by-400 relay, and Sana Washington from Lees Town Middle, second place in the 100 dash. Please join the board in congratulating these student athletes, and if you are here, come on forward. And if there are any family members, or friends, or supporters of these student athletes, if you could stand and be recognized as well for supporting your student athletes. The girls from Tate's Creek High School secured their first team championship at the 2019 KHSA A Class 3A State Track Meet. Rosalyn Hollingsworth set her state record in the 100-meter dash. She and teammates Mayan Davidson, Natori Robinson, and Alex Smith also set a new mark in the four-by-200 relay, and Natori placed first in the 300-meter hurdles. Meanwhile, distance runner Jenna Strange won both the 1600 and the 3200 meters by more than three seconds, and Brianna Payton placed second in the 800 run. On the boys' side, Roman Maskiminko finished second in the high jump. The Commodores are coached by Jonathan Hawks. Please join the board in congratulating them on an outstanding season. We'll break this up at school. All right, if we have any family members for these Tate's Creek student athletes, if you all could please stand and be recognized for thing... All right, but Tate's Creek wasn't alone. Other highlights from the state meet include, from Frederick Douglass, we have Isaiah Allen, first in the triple jump, Christian Lewis, first in the long jump. You two want to come on up? If we have any family members and friends of this Frederick Douglass athlete, if you all could stand and be recognized. From Henry Clay, Kendra DeRoy, Jaden Gatewood, Amaya Jenkins, and Alexis Pinkston, second place in the four-by-100 relay. Langston Jackson, first in the 100 and 200 dash. Chris Dabney, Ari Crutchfield, Raymond Jackson, and Langston, first in the four-by-100 relay, and Kobe Neal, Chris Langston, and Raymond, first place in the four-by-200 relay. If any of you all are here, come on up. And if we have any family members, friends, and supporters of these Henry Clay athletes, if you all could stand and be recognized for supporting your athletes. All right, so from Lafayette, we have Sarah Ferguson, first place in pole vault, Anaya Brown, Lamaya Campbell, Victoria Holiday, and Meredith Wilson, second place in the four-by-800 relay, and William Wharton, first in the 400 dash. If any of you all are here, come on up. All right, and just to wrap it on up, Frederick Douglass is coached by Crystal Washington, Henry Clay by Demetrius Gay. Oh, they are coming, sorry. I didn't see you, I apologize. So, welcome our Lafayette Generals. And if the family members, and the supporters, and the fans of the Lafayette Generals can stand and be recognized for supporting their athletes. Frederick Douglass is coached by Crystal Washington, Henry Clay by Demetrius Gay, and Lafayette by Corey Spalding. Please join the board in congratulating all these student athletes and these coaches for their track and field accomplishments. All right, the boys lacrosse from Henry Clay High School earned their fifth state championship from the Commonwealth Lacrosse League. The Blue Devils finished with a 17-4 record, including a 5-0 district record. These boys are coached by Josh Stewart, William Richmond, and Brad Clements. Please join the board in acknowledging this team on another outstanding season, and if you all can come on down. And if all the family members, supporters, and Henry Clay fans can stand and be recognized for supporting this lacrosse team on their fifth championship. But also impressive is that in only their second year of fielding a lacrosse team, Lafayette High School made it to the Kentucky Commonwealth League Girls State Championship and finished as runner-up to Woodford County. The Generals closed out the season with a record 18-4, and Annie Jonakin was named Coach of the Year. Please join the board in congratulating Lafayette on a terrific effort. If you all can come forward. If the family members, the staff, the fans of Lafayette can stand and be recognized for supporting these student athletes. So we have a special award right now. Marcus Dobbs, Director of Transportation in Fayette County Public Schools, has received a state-level award from the Student Transportation Association of Kentucky. The group named him the 2019 JT Coomer Memorial Director of the Year. Marcus is a native of Atlanta. He earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Albany State University in Georgia, and a master's in safety, security, and emergency management from Eastern Kentucky University in Richmond. He has been with Fayette County Schools for 22 years. He began as a bus driver in 1996 and became Transportation Director in 2015. Please join the board in recognizing Marcus on his latest achievement. If there are any family members, colleagues, friends who are here supporting Marcus, if you can stand and be recognized.
Good evening. At 211 degrees, water is hot, but at 212 degrees, it boils. The difference is just one degree, but that difference is significant. Boiling water... Boiling water creates steam, and that steam has enough energy to power a freight train. Reaching our mission of creating a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society requires an extra degree of effort from all of our employees. Each and every day, we have countless staff members who go above and beyond in the service of students. We honor some of those efforts with a two hundred and twelve degree recognition during our monthly school board meetings. Tonight's two hundred and twelve degree recognition is for three members of our Fayette County Public Schools Police Department, who ran toward danger while others were running away. On June twenty-sixth, Officer Dante Chin, Sergeant Christopher Gatewood, and Lieutenant Antoine Sims were having lunch at Bad Wolf Burgers on Foreman Avenue, just off of South Broadway. As Officer Chin was paying for his meal, he heard what he believed were gunshots. He immediately notified Lieutenant Sims and Sergeant Gatewood, and all three ran to investigate. Just a few steps outside the building, they met some frightened citizens who pointed to a man running away and said he had just shot someone, while the victim was near the office at Newtown Crossing Apartments. Sergeant Gatewood began administering aid to the victim, who had been shot multiple times, while Lieutenant Sims and Officer Chin began a foot pursuit after the fleeing suspect. As they chased and learned more information from other citizens, they gained a better physical description and a direction of his travel. Their detailed and accurate radio communication gave a clear picture to our dispatch team. Trying to cover more ground, Lieutenant Sims and Officer Chin separated as they continued to run after the suspect. An employee at Newtown Crossing offered to give Officer Chin a ride in their golf cart in hopes of making better time. Lieutenant Sims continued on foot while shouting verbal commands to the suspect, who was still armed with a handgun. Realizing that officers were approaching, the suspect discarded the loaded firearm in a storm drain, which was later recovered by Officer Chin. Soon after this, the suspect complied with verbal commands and began to surrender. As both Lieutenant Sims and Officer Chin came closer, the suspect again ran away toward a nearby apartment complex. The suspect reached his residence on the second floor of the apartment and slammed the door. A standoff ensued as more FCPS police and Lexington police officers arrived to form a perimeter around the building. The suspect's mother came to the door to speak with police, and after a period of time, she assisted him in being taken into custody without further incident. Without Lieutenant Sims, Sergeant Gatewood, and Officer Chin's quick response and expert police skills, this dangerous suspect would not have been taken into custody so quickly. In all, the pursuit covered more than two miles in length during a hot and humid summer afternoon. As further investigation revealed, the suspect involved had a long record of violent offenses dating back several years. Lexington is a safer community because of their heroic actions. Please join me tonight in recognizing these officers for understanding that their duty to serve extends beyond the doors of our schools. With us this evening are Lieutenant Sims and Officer Chin. Sergeant Gatewood is actually in FBI training right now, but his wife Cassandra is here to accept the award on his behalf.
Next on our agenda, we have three proclamations tonight, and first, Mr. Murphy, if you can introduce our first proclamation.
Yes, ma'am. Our next proclamation celebrates September eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National Arts and Education Week. We are honored this evening to have staff members from the new Brenda Cowan Elementary here with us to read this proclamation. At this time, I would like to introduce Dance Teacher Lydia Austin, Librarian and Creative Writing Teacher Grace Cottum, Art Teacher Jessica Skolf, Drama Teacher Austin Vell, Principal Joshua Williams, and Music Teacher Joseph Wrightson.
Whereas arts education, including dance, music, theater, visual arts, media arts, literature, design, and more, is an essential element of a complete and well-rounded education for all students, and...
Whereas exposure to the arts contributes to a school environment of high expectations, discipline, and academic rigor strengthens student problem-solving and critical thinking skills, and provides another opportunity for family, community, and business involvement with schools, and...
Whereas research has linked arts education to increased academic engagement and attainment, better attendance and graduation rates, higher academic aspirations, greater involvement in community service, and enhanced leadership skill development, and...
Whereas authentic experiences in the arts provide avenues for students to cultivate imagination and creativity while also building other skills and abilities such as personal identity, positive self-esteem, life satisfaction, and giving students a sense of meaning and purpose, and...
Whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, discipline and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding.
Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in celebrating September eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National Arts and Education Week. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Nash, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Our next proclamation is in recognition of September two thousand and nineteen as National Suicide Prevention Month. On a personal note, I have to say my family has benefited from national suicide prevention efforts. It's a bit serendipitous that I was assigned this proclamation. It's my honor to ask Interim Coordinator of Mental Health Services and Social Worker Sharika Smith Ford to read this proclamation.
Whereas each year in our nation, more than forty-five thousand individuals die by suicide, leaving behind friends and family members to navigate the tragedy of loss. And whereas the number of deaths by suicide has increased sharply in Kentucky, making it the second-leading cause of death for people between the ages of fifteen and thirty-four in the Commonwealth. And whereas National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month is an opportunity to share resources and stories in an effort to shed light on its highly-stigmatized topic, reach out to those affected by suicide, raise awareness, and connect individuals with suicidal ideation to treatment services. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, socioeconomic status, or background, and while suicide prevention is important to address year-round, National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month provides a dedicated time to come together with collective passion and strength around a difficult topic. And whereas too often, the feelings of shame and stigma prevent us from talking openly, however, we can all benefit from honest conversations about mental health and suicide. And whereas one conversation can save a life, so it is important to ensure that individuals, friends, and families have access to the resources they need to discuss suicide prevention.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby join the rest of the country in recognizing September twenty nineteen as National Suicide Prevention Month. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education.
A motion is in order to adopt the proclamation recognizing September two thousand and nineteen as National Suicide Prevention Month.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Nash, a second by Mr. Love, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Our last proclamation is in recognition of September the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National IT Professionals Day. It is my honor to invite Micro Computer Specialist Cole Campbell forward to read this proclamation.
Whereas providing reliable access to state-of-the-art technology, resources for students and staff, is an important component of supporting the academic success of students in the Fayette County Public Schools area. And whereas our IT professionals are an integral part of Fayette County Public Schools community, not only keeping existing networks and equipment running by completing more than five thousand help desk requests per month, but also researching and staying abreast of new developments in the field to ensure our students and staff have access to cutting-edge technology. And whereas testing, building, installing, repairing, and maintaining the hardware and software associated with the complex computer network system across more than seventy schools and work locations in the Fayette County Public Schools area is a major undertaking. And whereas IT professionals may fill many roles, creating and maintaining operational applications, developing, securing, and storing electronic data, assisting in the use of software and data management in critical function areas, and supporting communication in many forms, including phone calls, conference calls, and video and web conferences, as well as less-direct forms of electronic communication like network drives, email systems, and secure servers. And whereas IT professionals and FCPS are responsible for providing user support for more than fifty-one thousand devices, including forty thousand student devices, working behind the scenes to ensure our forty-three thousand students and eight thousand employees have the tools needed to communicate, collaborate, access instructional resources, and perform their work.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the members of the Fayette County Board of Education hereby express their deep appreciation to IT professionals as integral members of the school district team, and hereby join the rest of the nation in celebrating September the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National IT Professionals Day. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education.
A motion is in order to adopt the proclamation celebrating September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National IT Professionals Day.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Mr. Daniels, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to another guest this evening, who I forgot to introduce. But Mr. Kalk will be back this week, but Ms. Kate is in his place tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Spires. Before we begin the superintendent's report tonight, I'd like to add my own congratulations to our students and employees who we honored this evening. You're a living testament to the standard of excellence that we are all setting in the Fayette County Public Schools, so kudos to you and congratulations. So, board members, to begin our superintendent's report tonight, I have several staff members who will be coming forward. We're going to kick off with our Senior Director of Leadership, Sharonda Morton, and several of our staff members will be joining her, who will be sharing some great information on the summer learning opportunities that have been provided by our district. As you know, we're all in a mode of continuous improvement in professional learning, and you're going to be really amazed at our high quality of learning that took place in advance of our kickoff to our nineteen-twenty school year. Okay, Ms. Morton?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Professional learning goes on throughout our entire school year, but summer has been a passion and a focus for our superintendent's upon arrival here at the district. I am proud to honor the work that we've done throughout the summer. We've touched many lives, and our teachers are ready and prepare our teachers for the school year. So our two thousand and nineteen summer professional learning began with the Superintendent's Leadership Institute. We're in high gear connecting theory to action. It was July the fifteenth to the seventeenth. The audience included principals, schools, school administrators, and district leadership. Our featured speakers included John Davis, TNTP, Dr. Nancy Gutierrez, Dr. Tawari Jackson, Leanne Nicholson, and Cambridge Consultants. Our sessions included access to strong-grade, appropriate instruction, poverty, family engagement, disrupting bias, and a focus on the instructional process. We had in attendance over two hundred and thirty-seven individuals. It was an awesome event. Thank you.
I was excited.
Our Turnaround Institute was with Cambridge Education, and that was held July the twenty-ninth to the thirty-first. Our purpose was to provide school teams with research and evidence-based practices to improve student outcomes. The audience includes school administrators, SBIS and coaches, teachers, and staff from all seven CSI schools, along with Booker T. Washington. Our sessions included our focus, which we know has come from our Cambridge audits, on high-yield strategies, the motivated classroom, making feedback count, using data to inform instruction, and with an attendance of approximately three hundred individuals, we had an awesome event.
So I'm excited to share with you some information about our Teaching and Learning Conference. This is one of my favorite events that we host here in Fayette County Public Schools, and this year, we offered over one hundred sessions for our teachers free of charge. So I think that's truly amazing. We have lots of experts in our district that we are able to bring together across multiple departments to host this conference. So we had lots of different sessions this year, sessions with reading and writing, math, and science. We had some training for our teachers who are working within our Amplify Science Program. We also had training with social studies and special education, as well as sessions for our preschool teachers. This year, we brought in three presenters to help us focus on our culturally responsive teaching and learning. That was Roger Cleveland, Marietta Watts, and Pastor Edward Palmer. And we also, this year, you heard Ms. Morton mention Leanne Nicholson. She's a presenter, actually, with Eric Jensen's group, who has done a lot of research and work on, around working with students of poverty, and so she came and worked with lots of our teachers this year to focus in that area. We also had a lot of training for our teachers around technology and other subject areas. This was open to preschool teachers all the way up to twelfth grade, and as you can see there, we had great attendance. That number there, sixteen eighty-seven, that's the number of seats that we filled at the conference, and that's actually up a hundred and eighty-five from last year. So, and there's lots of other things that were going on at the same time, so I think it just speaks about the commitment of our teachers to our students.
Over eight hundred teachers attended our professional learning sessions this summer for ELA in grades K through twelve. Our purpose was to support the implementation of the revised reading and writing standards. In a spirit of collaboration and vertical alignment, all of our sessions, K through twelve, had a similar structure. All teachers were given the opportunity to dig deeply into their grade-level standards. We compared old standards to new standards to determine where those revisions are, and to think about how those revisions will impact instruction in the classroom. We also knew going into year-three implementation of both wonders and collections that it was important, it was a good opportunity for us to review our print and digital resources. So a second purpose to our session was to give teachers an opportunity to refine the use of our shared curriculum as we worked to implement the revised standards.
We were, we entered into year two, we are entering into year two of our investigations, so we spent a full day this summer doing investigations training, which is our K-two math program. We wanted the teachers to focus on three things. First, we wanted to make sure that they were, remained aware of our three district priorities. We wanted to make sure that they stayed true to the philosophy of the program, that they kept the student questioning and the high-level questions at the top of their thought processes as they were planning lessons, and we wanted to make sure that they were aware of the new standards. So we spent time on those three things. So we spent time on those three things during our time. We trained just right around 400 teachers this summer, so it was actually really, really good, a couple of weeks of training with our teachers. The other thing that we did for math this summer was our Advantage Math Recovery Training with our classroom teachers, which helps to support their Tier Two and Tier Three instruction in the classroom. So it helps to give them additional strategies to work with those students who are struggling in the classroom but aren't quite low enough or struggling enough to get intervention from, maybe an intervention teacher. So it gives those teachers additional strategies. So we trained over 131 teachers in that strategy this summer, so we had a great, we had a really great primary training summer.
This is our second year for Envision for grades three through five and for grades six through eight as well. So for grades three through five, in June, we had a one-day training for every teacher, and those teachers also got to dive into the new standards and do a crosswalk between the old and the new standards, and then focus on how we can continue with Envision implementing the new standards. Then in August, we had a one-day training for all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. We did the same thing, looking at the new standards and further looking at how we can implement Envision. We did have an emphasis on using more manipulatives in all grades three through eight with Envision.
For our elementary mathematics, we had 16 days during the month of June. With the help of our Pearson partners, we had two that came that helped us pull that off, and we were so grateful for their support. For middle school mathematics, there were only seven middle school teachers who were unable to attend, and the high school, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II rate, attendance rate was over 98%. We were all there.
As you all know, we started a new K through eight Amplify Science curriculum this year. This summer, we spent a lot of time working with administrators, elementary teachers, and middle school teachers. At this point, we've got 489 of our teachers total registered, and 17,489 students starting the program. It's quite an undertaking, we're excited, and we're moving forward with it.
We are excited to share with you about our new teacher orientation. This is the first opportunity for our new teachers to the district to get together for some professional learning. This year, we had a bumper crop. It's probably our largest group in a decade, so we had a little bit more than 300 that were able to be there with us. They experienced a lot of great trainings on those days in some professional learning, including the Total Participation Techniques, Trauma-Informed Care, Family Engagement, Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning, Positive Behavior Interventions, and of course, Professional Ethics. So this is a great way of beginning their career. We've got a whole group of UK students over here that hopefully will be a part of that, UK students, raise your hand over there. Hopefully, there'll be some future educators at Fayette County Public Schools.
And board members, we were able to send 25 teachers over to EKU this summer in June for our five-day Advanced Placement Institute. It's a very rigorous, very intensive training, probably some of the best training you can find in education for our high school folks. So we had subjects covered in most of our disciplines. You can see the list there. And the interesting thing was all six high schools had representation in one form or another. There was one course that was, or two courses not offered at EKU, so we had to send them to either, to other sites, and it's a total of 875 PD hours, just those 25 folks, so I was really proud of them.
Good evening. Through the generous support this year from the Lexmark Foundation, we were able to launch the Academies of Lexington Teacher externship program. So this summer, our very first time for doing this, we had nine teacher teams, so the three teams from each of our three academy high schools actually spent two days onsite. They were paired with a local business partner that aligned with the academy of that teacher team. They spent two days onsite, and then an additional day in which they were preparing projects to be implemented in the classroom this school year. To help those teachers expand their knowledge and develop some authentic classroom instruction, each host site presented case studies using scenarios from their company. The teachers and the business partners then together examined those scenarios and identified ways that their teaching could be, their learning could be implemented into the teacher's instruction to bring relevance and context to the classroom. The business partners that participated in the externship program this year were Able Engine, Bluegrass Care Navigators, Lexmark, St. Joseph Hospital, Fusion Core, Arch Vision, LBX, and the 911 Call Center.
FCPS was honored to receive for the 10th year in a row, the National Security Agency grant called StarTalk that supports the learning of critical languages. So with that, we ran a two-week-long camp at Tate's Creek Middle School for rising firsts through sixth graders, and we had over 100 kids come. Wonderful experience, and with that, we have to prepare faculty, many of which are not FCPS teachers, so we had to teach them how to be teachers very quickly, but we're also able to bring in FCPS teachers to the opportunity. Our professional training focused on technology and how to integrate that within the world language classroom, and how to do interpersonal speaking, and promote that collaborative nature with language that occurs. So that was our Chinese Language Camp professional learning. Next, we had our rollout of K through five curriculum is continuing for world languages, and we have our Level One for secondary that's being rolled out officially this year. With that, we've done multiple trainings, so this summer, we had an additional training to try to catch teachers who haven't been exposed to it yet, and to start to refine and build units that go along with that. We had 29 attendees to attend that. We also focused on language proficiency, helping students, the teachers understand what the levels are and how to connect instructional practices with that.
In special education, we had several training opportunities this summer. To highlight a few of those, the co-teaching initiative is in its fourth year. We had 70 attendees over three days for each of the three days, and that focuses on continuous classroom improvement, high-yield instructional strategies, and the co-teaching models. Those teams are comprised of principals, their internal coaches, and general education and special education teachers. We also are continuing to support our staff in developing evidence-based practices for autism, and they are focusing on the foundational five. The sessions that this summer focused on reinforcement, social skills, systematic instruction, and visual supports. We had over 120 participants, and that included teachers, paraprofessionals, school psychologists, counselors, and social workers. For our moderate and severe disabilities teachers, we had several days of training planned for them. They participated in training focused around our classroom checklist for moderate and severe disabilities, having district norms and evidence-based practices, using assistive technology in our classrooms, and the alternate assessment guidelines. There were 75 attendees, and that included teachers, some of our achievement and compliance coaches, paraeducators, and related service providers. We also provided sessions in evidence-based practices for supporting behavior. We do need to support the diverse behavioral needs of students with disabilities, so these focused on executive functioning, social thinking, and skill streaming, transportation of students with special needs, and de-escalation strategies. They did include training all of our bus drivers that drive special-needs buses and their monitors, as well as teachers and paraeducators, and we had about 98 attendees.
The EL department continues to expand PSYOP, or the Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It is an effective tool that we use in regular at classrooms so that content can be taught on grade level to students who are learning English. This takes about three days, and we had about 40 attendees this year. The schools that we added this year are Metathorpe Elementary, Lansdowne Elementary, Beaumont, and E.J. Hayes Middle Schools, Bryan Station, and Tate's Creek High Schools.
This was our 16th year of the Innovations for Learning Conference.